To kind of get us back on track and work through COVID to get us to where we are. A lot of hard work has gone into that, which you will see. And of course, I want to thank Lynn RoCap, our Chair of Trustees, and Jackie Watchell, who is co-chair of Finance, who will be providing today's information. They have worked hard to compile all of this for you and try to answer the questions that you might have before you even thought of them. But we're here to do that, too. So if you would, join me in a word of prayer, and we'll get right to it. Father God, again, thank you for this morning, for the opportunity to worship and to be the Church, called by you and by your Son, Jesus Christ. Thank you for this opportunity for us to discuss the building project that's before us and to ask the questions that we might have and to begin to wrestle with how you're leading us into the future to be effective in bringing people to your Son. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, thank you for being here, everyone, and good afternoon. Hi. So I wanted to start just with some foundational information of how did we get here? Where are we? Where are we going? What's happened? Right? Because there's been a lot of meetings, there's been a lot of committees, there's been a lot of work, and I know you all have a lot of questions. So let's start with where we come from. Let's talk a little bit about the Book of Discipline, and then we'll dive into our presentation. And Jackie and I are just going to kind of tag team up here, and we promise there'll be a roving microphone for questions after we're all done. So this started, this process of looking at a new building started back in 2014, 2015. So there were two trailers in the back that people might remember that served as our offices as well as our youth trailer. And in 2015, 2016, they became inhabitable. Okay? There was mold, there were problems with them, and we knew due to the structural issues that they had to go away, and thus they did. So we had a lot of things that changed. So Pastor Kelly started working from home. We started to move some of the classroom and some of the office space that we had in the back to accommodate staff, and we started to make a lot of shifts and changes. We lost the overflow room because we turned it into an office right outside off of the North X, and we all got real close and cozy and comfortable. So for anybody that's in Bible studies, we know how cozy and comfortable those rooms can be, right? And for those of you who have had Bible studies in the classrooms, in those tiny little chairs, there are certain body parts like mine that have trouble getting in and out of those chairs because they're not as small and streamlined as they once were. So we decided back then as a church that we were going to undertake and start to look at the possibility of a new building. And we came together at a meeting just like this when we discussed that. And then in 2016 and 2017, we decided that we were going to start to fundraise for this endeavor. So there were pledges, and many of you probably remember some of the letters that went out and some of the pledge cards that were not only in the chairs but mailed to you as well. Right? So that's where we started this whole thing. If we look at what guides us in the Church, it is the Book of Discipline. So there are some really important parts of the work of the Trustees that are in the Book of Discipline, and the Trustees all guide by a guidebook. And in here are the very main components of the Books of Discipline for what we're responsible for as Trustees. And as Trustees, we are responsible for not only the buildings but the maintenance. Right? So that means existing and anything moving forward. So it came to be charged to the Trustees to lead us down this pathway and see what we could possibly do with a new building. And at that time, the Building Committee was established. So the Trustees knew, the Trustees have more than just the new building on their plate, right? We have the existing building, we have lots of other responsibilities that we take care of. And a Building Committee was established so that they could report back to the Trustees and have all of these meetings, and we got a very robust and wonderful group of people together to start to take on this work. So when we look at why the Trustees are here presenting to you, it is because the charge comes from the Church to the leadership of this Church. And we love Pastor Kelly, and he is our pastor, and he is our leader at this point. However, the Book of Discipline is very clear that the pastor does not lead the charge on this because as much as we love our pastor, he could be reassigned and he could leave us at any time. So the Methodist Church wants to make sure that the community, the congregation, the members of the Church are plugged into what is happening. And we know that that's a great group of us. And then we as leadership, and for those of you who do not know who the leaders of the Church currently are, make sure that you scroll down on your weekly word to the lower right-hand corner and click the button that says "Leadership." You will see all of the committees and who is on those committees and who is leading our committees, and they are accessible to you at any time. So our leadership then takes what the congregation brings to us and votes on things through Charge Conference and then can present things to the district, the Florida District of the United Methodist Church. So that's kind of where we stand. The Trustees asked an ad hoc committee to come together. They've pulled together quite a bit of information. We did some fundraising, and I want to be clear that the Book of Discipline tells the Trustees, "Before you come to us and ask for a loan for a mortgage, hey, if you can afford it all on your own, go ahead and spend your money if you vote to do that. But if you have to vote for a mortgage, we need you to do some real certain work before you get started." And for any of those who have built their own home or done their own type of construction in their home, that's not an easy task. There's lots going on. So what the Building Committee did is they started to work with architects and designers and many different entities to start to build a plan. And one of the important things that you know about that plan is that it is fluid. So every time we came to a fork in the road, we looked at what the current needs of the Church were, the future needs of the Church, and how they were going to be met. And of course, who could have anticipated the latest wrinkle of the pandemic? So we still very much have that focus of what we need and where we want to go. I also want to be clear from a foundational aspect that when we did fundraising for the new building, all of the money that was both pledged and collected goes into what is called a designated fund. Those funds cannot just be used by Hope United Methodist Church any way we want. When those funds are pledged for their new building, that means that all of those funds need to be used for that purpose. The Book of Discipline again guides us to say that while you're pulling all of this research together, you may need to spend some of those funds to get the drawings done, to meet with architects, to have contracting done, to hire attorneys, all of the different things that we would need to decide how is this going to progress. So yes, have we spent some of those funds? We certainly have because we needed to to get to where we are. If we could have the next slide, please? Our vision at Hope is to connect with God, each other, and the community. So we took our vision and we looked at what a new building could possibly bring to us: reaching the community, a larger preschool and the ability to increase enrollments, adequate office space for our staff of the Church, adequate space for our youth because right now our youth meets in the sanctuary when it's available. We also want to be able to connect with each other more. District was here last week, and there was stuff going on with, you know, the summer school and stuff like that, and we had some difficulty trying to find a space that we were going to sit down with District. And for those of you that run Bible study, you know you face the same problem, right? We're out of space with what we have here currently that God has so far provided for us. So this plan is to give us more of those space. Additionally, the pastor would finally have his own office and, hooray, a conference room, a youth space, meeting rooms, and we really do feel that all of this additional space and this additional building is going to help us meet our vision and needs. If we could have the next slide, please? Jackie, feel free to jump in at any point, okay? So this is what the architects have built. Now, this was not the original concept. When you think back to, you know, I started to talk to you about 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, that is certainly not how it started, but that's where we are now. That is an estimation of what the building would look like, and that building does sit behind this building, okay? And there's some more diagrams if we could have the next picture. There's obviously been a lot of diagramming that has been done here. I do believe that these pictures were made available on some boards at one point that were in the North X for quite a while. So, you know, all of the stuff that you just see doesn't happen with a magic wand. Months and months and hours and hours of dedicated leadership that went into the time and the planning to get us to this point. If we could have the next slide, please? This is what the back of the building would look like. In the lower, what's my right, what should be your right, too? In the lower corner, that's the pavilion building. So you can kind of see that this will sit sandwiched between the current building that we have, and nothing would happen to that pavilion. We would still be able to utilize that. So that's what that back area looks like. This is a two-floor building, and it does have a lot of different facets that we will kind of dig into a little bit, the design aspects of it. And if you can look, you can see that all of the classrooms and office spaces are well allocated. Now, these designs were made with an incredible amount of input from current staff, leadership here, meeting with the architects, meeting with designers, because when they get to these plans, you know, they're trying to figure out where are we going to put electric, where are we going to put plumbing, you know, what do we need to execute a building of this capacity? The current space as it sits will provide a first-floor preschool with eight classrooms, and the second floor will house six adult classrooms as well as a youth area and office space. And I know those are some pretty small pictures, but we could certainly make those available on our website for anybody when we put this recording up for anybody that wants to kind of zoom in on those and see those.
Just real quick on that last slide. Something that goes with having the first floor and the second floor is if we have, when we use the second floor, we won't have to access anything on the first floor. So that preschool would be completely closed and locked per se on a Sunday. So it is safe. They have met all the protocols that a preschool would need as far as having our own space upstairs. They've built it so that when you come in, you have just access to the second floor when you're part of the Church.
And not only for safety, for insurance purposes as well. One of the major parts of the budget that we spend as a church is for our insurance on the buildings and all the things that we have. And for any of you that have your own home and are paying insurance rates in your homes, you know that those rates are going up, 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 up. You know, just this past year, our cost for insurance on the existing building has risen 22%. 22%. And that's, you know, the district is consistently getting the best rates for us. That's a renegotiated rate to get it as low as they possibly could. So, you know, insurance is, Jackie raises a perfect point, it's very important to us. So if we could have the next slide, please?
An elevator.
There is not, and it's coming on this slide right here. Here are some of the design points that are really important. In addition to elevator and of course stairwells, we are making a building that is completely accessible for ADA, so Americans with disabilities will be sure that we have all of those requirements that are met. There's also playgrounds that will be taken care of. Obviously, preschool and a playground usually go together. There'll be a shaded area for play, which is real important in the state of Florida for children these days. You see there that there's the elevator that will be accessed. There will also be adult meeting rooms on that second floor so that, as Jackie has already said, if we were doing an evening meeting or daytime meeting, you know, we're not going through the school. We can get just to that area that we need to do. And certainly that designated youth area is going to be key to what we're doing. Jackie's done a great amount of research, if we could have the next slide, about why. Not only the needs of this Church and the congregation in which we serve, but the community around us. So Trinity is booming, right? We all know, right? No matter how we feel about it, it's what's happening. So there is going to be an influx of people to the area. You can see on the slide, maybe it might be small. For me, it's small. I have my slides real big here so I can see. There's a huge growth rate. 5,741 new single-family residential permits were given out in 2019. We know that COVID came in 2020, so there was some halt to that, but we know now all of those restrictions are being lifted and even new areas. All you got to do is drive down the road, and you'll see all of the areas that are really booming. We also know from what's happening that Photonics Drive, which runs alongside of us here, is going to be a through road. So the area in which we sit and this building is on is going to change. We're going to have even more access and more people going by us every day just because of the infrastructure of the roads and how the county has planned for that to happen. So why should we expand Hope and Play? Well, there's a need. And as many of you may know, Hope and Play as it exists now is a partial-day program. Okay? And we are full at our capacity for Hope and Play, and we often turn people away. And for any of you that are on social media or Trinity Chat or any of those formats, you see that there are many requests, and quite often it's the leadership of this Church that's popping in there requesting that people come and check us out. But we also know that we would be served even better if we were able to expand with before and after care. So our thought process also includes having enough space so that we could take on programs like that as well, so that we can really serve the people in the community the way that they need to be served. So if it's, you know, somebody that needs a mom's morning out, they could do it. If somebody's working full-time, they could do it as well. So it really expands those needs. We know that our congregation grows as Hope and Play grows. We know that one of the things, one of the parts of our mission is to pour into those children because they are going to be filling the seats where you're sitting. They're our future. So that's where we look when we say that we're going to go forward with that. We know that the curriculum and the teachers that we have, you know, we have a longstanding history of keeping teachers, which if you talk to some other preschools in the area is not the situation. We have a devoted staff that works for Hope and Play now, and the class sizes will be able to increase, will have more room for those classes, and we will be able to extend the care and the offerings that we give. So one of the first things that we did, and I thank Jackie for all of her hard work on this, is we had to pull together some documents for some of our applications. So the first thing we did, if we could have the next slide, please, is we looked at three years of financial statements, and we looked at, you know, projections. And you can just progress through if you would, Tyler, please, to the next two. So what's on this is what we've pulled together with the help of Coraleen. It's our three-year projections of financials. And then we looked at our budgets. So we looked at what we do as a congregation, and for anybody that's on the Finance Committee, that budgeting time gets to be really crunch time because we really are trying to plan and be good stewards of the money that we have. So if you can go forward again. And this is the pro forma that Jackie worked so hard on. What she did is she looked at all the past financials, and she looked at what we would need for this new building, and she did lots of research with the teachers, the staff, talking with the Building Committee to see what was needed. Do you want to address the pro forma a little bit?
Yes, I'm sorry it's so small. I know it's hard to see those numbers, but I do want you to see that in the, there's two columns on the right-hand side, the projected revenue, and then I highlighted in yellow the 80% capacity. Because I had done the pro forma originally, we were in COVID, but COVID hadn't hit really hard. So we said, wait a second, what if we don't occupy it at 100%? Would we still be financially sound? So I went ahead and said, well, okay, let's go ahead and occupy it at 80%. And so the 80%, we're not going to bring in as much. I left the expenses the same because we wouldn't want to let a teacher go just because her classroom wasn't full. So even at the 80% level, I show over to the left that we would be, the building would be, bring in an additional $86,461.40 per month, while the expected cost per month is $38,500. So I went through each of the classrooms, the tuition. I analyzed the tuition based on preschools in this area. So I kind of did a average of the area preschools so that we would have a good idea of the tuition, the before and after care.
Next slide.
Okay. And so, and I also factored in the money that we would generate during the summer with summer camps, having a larger capacity for our summer camps because those fill up very quickly as well. And so the yearly income I showed at 100% would be $460,004. At 80%, our yearly income would be $243,850.40. So the pro forma, I went back even at the end of this school year. So the pro forma was done at the start of the 2020 school year, and I went back and captured the tuition rates and everything again at the end of this year. And everything was still up to date as far as my tuition rates that we would be able to charge and the capacities.
Next slide, please.
So you'll notice on the pro forma, I went ahead and put the hourly rate per employee, and we had it at $12.50. I went ahead and pulled the preschool average in New Port Richey, and it's at $11.24, just to show that we would be paying our teachers above that average in the area. Our preschool director, I had it at $40,000. The average in this area is about $42,870. So I can adjust that to be more average, closer to the average or exceed the average if needed, but just to show that my numbers were in line with the area. You know, I think that's important to make sure that we're paying our staff well. And I put the, if you look at the slide, if it's sent out, I don't know if it's sent out, but there are the links to where I found my numbers. So that's in red. I didn't want to put the whole hyperlink, but if you have the PowerPoint slide, you can click on that. On the area preschool tuition rates, this was a little bit tougher to find online. Sometimes they want to hide them or have you call. But I did look at St. Thomas Aquinas Early Childhood Center. That's also a preschool in the area that's in a church. Discovery Point, which is a very popular preschool in this area, and Generation Christian Church, which is right down the road. I put a screenshot of Generations and just to, I really wanted to show their tuition rates. Their tuition rates were above what I had, and almost every single class, there are some that are sold out, have less than, the highest, I think, is three seats remaining. And that's for a school year that's starting in August. So this data was probably updated the end of May, and they're almost completely full. And I wanted to provide this information so that you could see there is a need in this area, even though, you know, we have other preschools, it's just like we have other middle schools and high schools. The area is expanding very quickly. So there is a need for the preschools in this area, and I just wanted to capture that on that slide to show that, you know, we are at capacity at other preschools.
Next slide, please. So not only are we looking at that there'll be an excess of money, but that excess also comes into play when you look at the questions of, gee, are insurance rates going up in the area? Or do we need to be able to put some money into capital reserves? So not only will we be able to meet the expenses of the mortgage, the staffing, the preschool, but we will also have an excess to be able to financially plan for our future well, to be sure. To be able to progress forward. So what are the costs? So, you know, when you first look at the slide, it's a little astounding. So we, I apologize if it's small. So we look at not, we're looking at not only what the cost of the new projected building is, but we also know that the building that you're sitting in now is in need of some repair. We need a new roof, and we need a new air conditioning system. And this building runs off of two air conditioning systems, so it's not one but two that we will need. So we were able to increase, we talked to the district to see, do people take, you know, additional funds for a current building if it needs to be repaired? And they said, yes, people do do that. So we came up with the loan amount that we would be looking for is $5.5 million for the building as well as existing fixed to here. $5.5 million. So the building cost alone for the building is $4.7 million. So all those pretty pictures that you looked at, that's what it's going to cost. And that's, you know, it's not just the building, it's the plumbing, it's the electrical, it's the security, it's all of the internet feeds, it's all of the different needs that we have there. Yes, Lou? Correct. Out the door. We're done. We're done, but also need to be cognizant that we'll put aside some of the extra additional income to stewardly plan for any problems with the future. So the other thing that we have to do at this point with the building and the Building Committee pulled together was a timeline for potential completion. Can I have the next slide, please? You're not going to be able to see, but let me explain to you just a little bit. So this would be a timeline from when the shovel hits the dirt, but it's also made so that it can shift back and forth depending on what's happening now. We have to put a pause on what we're doing because we need approvals by district, we need approvals by our congregation to go forward. So all of these are projected dates that we said to the builders and the different vendors that we're working with. Well, if we were going to start, what does this look like? What does the time to completion look like? So they work up those fees for you. So if we could have the next slide, please? Just to frame us of what we've done and what comes next. So we've done our capital building fundraising, gotten pledges, gotten donations, so we've had our funds raised. We've continued all of our work with Hope and Play, which is keeping, you know, the doors open at Hope and Play, keeping the doors open here. As a committee, the Building Committee has created this pro forma. They have an engineer, a building firm. A pre-approval was put into the district for a loan application. So we have a pre-approval for a loan. That doesn't mean the district has said, yes, we give you the green light. It just kind of locks in the interest rate so that we're sure that we know what the planning costs are going forward. So we have that pre-approval, and now is what comes next. We have the town hall meetings. There will be a meeting where we need to do a vote with our congregation, where with two-thirds of a vote, we can go forward. If the congregation votes and two-thirds are affirmative, we will go forward. The district has already been in and looked at this presentation. We have a couple of questions that they asked, and they want some more financial background developed by us. Once we turn that into district, they will meet and give a conditional approval or denial based on what this congregation votes to do. So they could say, sorry, we're not going to give you the money, and that kind of ends it all. Or they can say, yes, we conditionally will approve this if your congregation holds the Charge Conference, and two-thirds of the votes are affirmative to go forward with this building committing. So that brings us to where we are here to start to talk to you about this, to have the conversations, because as a leadership, and certainly our pastor agrees, we didn't want to just hold a Charge Conference, right? We have to have some discussions about this. So where are we? What have we found out? What are people thinking? What are the concerns? How can we talk about this? And then eventually, we're going to vote within the upcoming weeks about this. Did I miss anything? Pastor Kelly? Jim? Good. So there is a, some roving microphones. We want to hear from you. We would like to know what your thoughts are. I apologize that the text on the slides is small. We are going to make this presentation as well as documentation that you've seen here of this presentation available on the church's website. Okay, so that'll, that'll help you see some of that.
I got two questions.
Sure.
One, is that first floor going to be strictly for Hope and Play? Or is it just, so strictly, okay. So like church gatherings or functions would still be here?
Second floor, here, out in the pavilion.
Okay. And then you're kind of showing some of these long range projections. Has there been any thought to, again, thinking of church meetings or functions? Any possible thought given to, because you're looking at all this additional money? Be expanding or moving the kitchen? So that we can have a little bit better church functions? Because let's face it, the best church functions typically include food. You know, if you like moved it over to the other side where those classrooms are now, granted, you'd have to wait until that building is built. But maybe moving it over there so then you can have like a open window so that we can have refreshments after church or things like that? And have a bigger space for the kitchen? And then eventually tear this one down or use that, you know? Hopefully we'll have a need for more seats in here? Or something to that effect? Have that, has a future projection been thought of?
I, I think the planning and, and I'll ask the building committee and Pastor Kelly to help on this. That would be more of a second phase for this building.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm.
Yep. And that, that's not included in any of these projections or costs. Anything to add there, Jim?
So this building is going to be used for before care and after care. So the classrooms here, they're not going away. So when people have to go to work early and need to drop their children off early, that will, they will drop them off here. There'll be a cost associated with that, just so you know. That, so that's revenues, the before care and after care that aren't on these charts, okay? But there's additional revenues that will be generated from, from that. So yeah, we've not discussed enlarging the kitchen yet. But you know, if, there's, there's future plans, so, but we're just not there yet, okay?
I was also going to add that the, how we designed or how the, not we, the architects designed the building, it allows for more expansion as well in the future. So additional buildings can be added as well, as far as the layout, if that makes sense.
All of our space in the back does not go away with this new building. We still own a good more amount of lands that will service our needs into the future.
Yes, I have two questions. First, 2/3 of the church, what are we talking about?
Current, current membership, Pastor Kelly?
It has to be members present in full, people who are full members, who are present at the charge conference. And we are looking to do that via Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Because that is permissible, but you'll have to preregister if you're going to do that.
So again, just for the recording, just because I know you don't have a mic there, we are planning on doing that charge conference via Zoom. We are going to come up with a way that you'll have to preregister. It is members of the church, full members of the church that will be given a vote. And it would be not based on the membership, it's the people that come to that charge conference meeting.
And my second question is, since I work with the school system in maintenance and construction, I know how much constructions costs have doubled, tripled in the last year.
Yes.
Have we taken into account that?
Not only have we looked at that, the charge, the district has told us that in order, at this point with any buildings, they're requiring that a bond, the builder have a bond to maintain costs from that construction contract.
And I just want for a little more insert.
Good.
I think our original goal for the building was to build it for $2.5 million. So, and when we came to them and said, hey, great, let's build a $2.5 million building, they told us, it's going to be four and a half. And then they peeled us off the ceiling. So yeah, this is the price that has doubled. So that's all.
Thanks.
Yeah, and this, this is Jim, I just wanted to mention that just this week I had a conversation with our construction management company. And they told me that, you know, don't, don't sign the contract, you know, because the prices are starting to come down. We're seeing them coming down. They kind of peaked, you know, a few weeks ago. And now in certain areas are starting to come down. They're not going up any lower, they're at a level or starting to come down. So, so, you know, so we're, we haven't signed anything yet, so good thing. So hopefully, you know, they'll come down.
Lou? I, I don't think I have a question specifically in the building and stuff like that. But, but I do have some information I would like to understand. I understand, and I thank you for putting up the chart, the relationship between the school and the viability financially of this church. I think it's important to understand that, that without the operation of the school, it's fair to say the church would be in a reasonably difficult financial place. So if I'm looking at that, and I'm, what I'm trying to figure out, and I just want information, please don't hear this, this is criticism. How do we get from there to a church, to a school and a church that sustain some of these numbers? What, how do you get from where we are today to that? I, I think I'd like to understand the marketing that goes into that, the change in staff for the church to administrate and handle a building of that size. You know, the kind of things that say, I get where you're going. I mean, I'm not, I know we're not going to agree on everything, and I'm not talking about that. I'm, my heart's in the building. Question is, for me, how do I understand how we get and what processes we're going to have and sustained expenses et cetera for operating a building? You know, and a campus and all this sort of stuff? Because it's just not preschool staff, I would imagine. There's a whole bunch of other implications regarding maintenance and
Sure.
trying to take care of it. So I think some of that explanation would be incredibly helpful. And I'm not asking for it today.
No, I, I have an answer for you, Lou.
Okay.
And it might be, it might not be a complete answer for you. So as we looked at this, the numbers that we're looking at are looking solely at the preschool right now. We're looking at what the preschool revenue is going to be, and that that preschool revenue will pay off the mortgage to that building. And that's what we've looked at right now. So it does not account for anything with our current outreach to, and ways that we're going to increase the size of our church. However, the district has tasked us with a plan and telling them, how do we convert the people that come to that preschool? How do they work into our congregation? And that is, that is some paperwork that we're going to be looking back historically on our numbers from and looking to give them some more information. Like I said, there, there's still a couple of things district has asked for, and that is one of the things. Because the numbers that we looked at are only for the preschool right now. Sure, the puzzle pieces.
And I'd like to add to that is that our, what we will include in the presentation when we provide it to the district is our kindergarten readiness from the VPK. I think that many parents look at that when their child goes to preschool and they're paying a tuition. How ready are they for kindergarten? And I fully believe that we have a great success rate, but I know I need to put it into numbers. So there is an assessment done in the preschool at the beginning, in the middle, and the end of the VPK year. And once we have those numbers, that will support our reasons why people want to choose Hope and Play.
You know, there's a saying that you don't build a bridge to accommodate the number of people who are currently swimming across the river. So when the bridge is built, it's going to draw a lot more traffic. And I'm like you, Lou, I tend to worry about things. And my personal psychology is I'm a little bit skeptical most of the time about most things. But it looks to me like we have a pretty good plan. And I don't think we have to have it all in front of us because we are living, breathing people who will deal with situations as they arise. And if we need more people in our school, we'll get them. I'm quite sure that we're capable of doing that. God forgive me, I hate to do this. Lou, I believe you and I love you. But honest to God, we need a little faith here. We have a great plan in front of us. And it's mostly already there. It's mostly, I agree with you, it's not 100% there, it's not 100% clear. Nor does it have to be, in my estimation. At least that's, that's what I'm pleading for you all, is to just look at this with eyes of faith and belief. Because I believe it can happen, I've seen it happen before. And generally, I tend to be a little negative, because a lot of people that vouch to that.
I would like to add to that, too, is in our pro forma and into the, all the budgeting, we do provide money from the preschool to the church. So that is going to be, in the budget, I have in the pro forma, the money from the preschool that's brought over to the church to help support the church. So that money is built in there as well into the budget. So that is in our figures.
I'm with you, Lou. I think about Hope and Play, how many of those families have come to this church? And I can think of one teacher. And I may be wrong there. But we need to do something to get those people, those parents, interested in our church. Not just to bring their kids here, but to come here and worship.
So to piggyback on that, I was on a same thought process. And I wondered, have there been any longitudinal studies on percentage of preschool parents that end up joining the church that their children go to?
We have just asked for some of those numbers so we can start to compute that for district and for all of the concerns that you're hearing here. We've just asked for those numbers, it was not part of our original projections.
And then number two, because this is such a huge transition all time, and this is years and years, we realize that phase two is a long ways off. But at the same time, our church is going to have to do something extra with hospitality to invite all these new preschool parents to come here.
Agreed. I think, I think as we as a church body, when we make our decisions of where we're going to go, our planning for what we do as a congregation is going to have to meet those needs as well. You know, and there's certainly, you know, if, and I'm saying if, if the congregation votes yes, and if the district says yes, right? So these are contingental things. So if they both say yes, then we know that there's a time. And it's going to be heads down working on what that business plan looks like. And I know that there's already been discussion of it at the staffing level to start to think forward to those things.
Has there been any consideration with Methodist Church itself? What's coming in the future? As far as what's going on with Methodist Church overall? Is it going to affect them to have, to give us loans?
I'm going to let Pastor Kelly speak to that because he was just at the annual conference, and they talked about buildings and loans in relation to what the church faces.
Well, I have a couple other questions, sir.
Sure.
Do you want to ask them now?
I'll try to remember them all.
Okay. The 5.4, I assume that is.
I'll give you the microphone while.
It's combination. I don't use this very often. In fact, you can do it now.
5.4.
I got me sidetracked. Okay. Part of that 5.4 million, does that also include what we owe on this building and so forth?
Yes.
Okay. And the contract itself, the 5.4, if it was approved, you're not going to be borrowing 5.4 off the bat, are you?
Yes.
It will not be contracted according to how this, how it's going? I mean, why would you want to, why would you want to have a 5.4 million thing? And three years later, you get the, you know?
Yeah, so this is basically a construction loan, right? So you draw from it as you build, it's not like, and you really don't start paying the interest on the loan until it's completed. So that's kind of how, how, just like when you build your house. If you build a, anybody's ever built a house and you get a construction loan, works the same way.
Real quick, I wanted to touch on the Hope and Play families that come to the church because I, I feel like I wasn't, I don't really know the families that are in the preschool. But I will say, I worked with a man and I saw him at church here one time. And later I saw him at a meeting at work, and I said, Patrick, I saw you at church. And he's like, oh, yes, Hope. And I said, yes. And he, I said, what brought you to Hope? And he said, my children go to the preschool there. So I do think some of the families do attend the services, and I don't know if we are able to track that. They might not just become members, though. And so I do want to say that many of my children's friends come to church here because their kids came to the preschool. But I don't know that they became members. So I'm not sure how we would track it unless we asked everybody who came in, what brought you here? But from my personal experience, you know, we've been coming to this church for nine years, but we just became members three years ago. And you might not be able to track where we came from. So I do think that our preschool is drawing people in from the community, although we might not have the statistics right now to support that. If we did some research, and I'm happy to, you know, go forward with that and try to figure out the families. But I would have to know the families from the preschool and follow up with them that way. So I do feel like there are more families coming here that maybe we've accounted for. Maybe they don't come to the service that you might expect them to come to, or they're not members. But I do feel like we're reaching the community with our preschool.
And if I can just piggyback on that, to be fair, I have not been of the impression that the establishment of Hope and Play was intended in order to bring people to the church. That it's primarily served as a preschool. That's not to say that it shouldn't. And it's also not to say that efforts have not been made in an attempt to do so. However, I think we can do a much better job of that. And that's something that Lynn clued into that we have been talking about, about how to be more intentional about bridging between the school and the church. And hope that people would attend here. I know from conversations I've had with Lisa, about 90% of the folks that, because she asked everybody in their registration, if they attend a church, about 90% of them say they go somewhere else. So we just need to be mindful that that may be true. I know there are people who say, I attend so and, you know, such and such. And you kind of go, mm, okay. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. But again, we can do a better job of that, certainly. As to the question that Bob asked about the vote coming up, we'll have other discussions about that vote. General Conference will meet in September of 2022. So we have a little bit more time before the actual general conference votes on a split in the denomination, if you will, and what that would look like. But I do understand the question of where it's coming from as it relates to how would that affect both membership here and support of the building. That's a very real question and concern. But I think also, from the information that you've been given, it's heavily dependent upon the success of the school, for good or for bad. And perhaps that vote would not have as much impact as it could. And secondly, I think we have to, we have to trust God to some degree in this, that no matter who's here or who isn't, that God's going to provide. So there's a little bit of faith there, too. But I, but I certainly feel that tension. But I, but I certainly feel that tension, both personally and as your pastor, so. Other questions? And again, I don't, I don't know how we can anticipate what that would look like, to be honest with you.
Just an FYI, the Trinity area has well over 10,000 housing units planned, and right now we're at the 2,000, as far as construction.
Okay, so Scott just said there's 10,000 units planned, but only 2,000-
Have been constructed.
Have been constructed.
Well, actually less, specifically-
Specifically in Trinity.
Just Trinity.
Sorry. So in Trinity, 10,000 permits have been granted, basically, and 2,000 have been built.
Starkey Ranch itself is planned for 5,050 units, and they have the 1,000.
All right, so Starkey Ranch is at 5,050, and they have 1,000. Part of what Lynn was saying, too, is that Photonics is, the, the road that you take into church that you think is part of our parking area, is Photonics, which goes across the street by the YMCA, et cetera, and that will be extended all the way to Duckslow. Is that the correct pronunciation? Slough, slow? And all of this land behind us has already been mapped out for housing. So there'll be a thoroughfare right past us, right through a housing development, all the way to Duckslow. Again, that's all to be determined, we haven't seen any permits being pulled, et cetera. So there's, there's going to be a lot of growth, Lou?
Well, I just to clarify, if you love this, that's fine. If I, do you, do we understand what these folks are doing down here? How much of that construction will come under the control or influence of generations? Because they have their own school. And how, how much of the, because how much of the market potential is, been changed by having the chapel across the street and they have their own school? So, you know, to me, I, I think the demand is there, but I mean, it's, what kind of, are you concerned about them? Is that not an issue?
As we hear, they're almost all full already.
And?
Well, and-
Oh, so our capacity is going to make up for that demand? Okay.
I think you also have to look at the area schools. You know, if you look at JW Mitchell High School across the street, they're above capacity. I think that there's room in the area for more than one preschool, and we're showing that those preschools are filling up. So, you know, I think there's many to choose from, but I will say that Hope &amp; Play has a niche because we have some of the best teachers, and we, we offer something that some other preschools might not offer. And I also think our waiting list supports that we're ready to grow.
And, and I don't think simply building the building, it's not build it and they will come. We're going to have to put in work to continue to grow our marketing. We're going to have to put in work to continue to grow what we do with our congregation. Nobody anticipated pandemic and an increase of our online congregation, which has been phenomenal and wonderful. And for any of you that were here for the Easter egg hunt that Amy Kirby put together so wonderfully, we could not believe they just kept coming through the door. And it was social media and our streams and our speaking of the event that we were having. And Amy had paperwork ready so that she could touch every single one of those families with summer camp information and with school information. So there's a lot of stuff that does go on from that marketing perspective that is being met, and we'll continue to pivot and change and increase and do better on that.
My wife and I went to First United Methodist Church in Tarpon Springs for over two decades. They had a big building plan over there. The church at the time was not even in black, running in the red, and they had a very ambitious building project. And my nose was out of joint about it because I came home and told Pamela, look, if we can't pay our mortgage, would we build an addition on our house? That doesn't make any sense, that's nuts. My wife, being a spiritual better, said, trust God. Like, long story short, they got an indoor basketball court, commercial kitchen, paid for. I couldn't see it, I could not see it, I could not see a plan to it. I want to be practical, I want to be reasonable, I want to be financially prudent. I was wrong. God can do amazing things if we let him.
Amen.
So I'm going along with the same thing of that. You're saying that we are having all this boom online stuff. Are we getting the revenue from that? Because we already had to cut our youth pastor. My kids didn't go to Hope &amp; Play, we started in middle school. Sorry, I hate talking to public.
It's okay.
So that's my concern. We've already had to cut our budget because we're not able to sustain, but yet we want to take on a $5 million loan.
Right.
I have some concern there. Not that I don't have faith, believe me.
And anybody that didn't have concern wouldn't be looking at both sides of the coin. Concern is good. It, right? It means that we care, and it means that we want to go into the future. And no one, e- even when we began planning this, no one could have anticipated pandemic. That pandemic is what hurt us, right? Now, we walk in today, the seats are back to normal. We are seeing more revenue coming back as normal. You know, and we hate to keep saying, but, we know that Pastor Kelly gets up here and talks to us all about tithing, right? So this building will support itself, however, that doesn't mean that the need for us to tithe and the need for us to continue to raise our funds for this church doesn't exist. It certainly exists. Because any church is going to need that to sustain itself and to sustain the missions that it has that it wants to do outside of, say, the preschool. Can we get a mic for Jim? Thanks.
So, I can ask you- You know, God works in strange ways, right? So we have a pandemic, and we're all mustered in our houses and all doing what we're supposed to be doing. And what did Hope do? They created an online presence. So we're reaching out to places we could never reach before. We're, we're reaching people we could never reach before. So, you know, you know, while we're, you know, we talk about our group here, you know, when we, when we meet here as, as, as a, as a congregation, but we really, you know, we have another congregation that's online. We have another congregation, we got people reaching that we never could dream of reaching before the pandemic. So I just wanted to bring that up, too. So, you know, it's not only here, you know, our, our, our congrega, our congregation is bigger than what we see now. Okay, so.
Anything from our Building Committee or any other comments? Yes, ma'am. Oh, Corleene, it's you, hi.
Hi. I just want to make a comment.
Please.
I'm not a member of the church, I work here.
Oh.
But this, I think it's the first service I came to, I have to say, and I listen most weeks online. I am overwhelmed at how moving and wonderful this service was. This church should grow with what, what this church has. And they have the spirituality and they have the trust in God. So I, I just, I'm speechless, really. And I just have to applaud everyone involved here and just continue and thank you, Cap and everybody invol, I don't want to pick everybody up.
And you're part of that, right? Because we have the most incredible staff around.
Oh, we have a great staff.
I don't, I don't care what the other churches got, they don't have what we have.
We have-
And the people that sit here knows that.
Honestly, I can tell you, I've worked at other churches, this is phenomenal. This is a great church to work for because we all get along, there's no back, back bickering or talking about other people. It's, it's a great church. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Right.
And I, and I just, I want to back up what Lou's saying in the sense that I, I think
we're talking about the same thing. Yes, I think we have the faith, I think we all see the, the need and the things of that nature, but we want to be, what is it Jesus said, wise as? Yeah. And so we're, we're trying to do that. And you're, and Lynn's exactly right, there's more work that needs to be done on our business plan as it relates to how we make this happen. The reality is, plans as they have been presented make this very heavily weighted upon the success of Hope &amp; Play to the degree that we've talked about. And so we have to make that happen. And as for, of course, the bridging between the church and the congregation, sorry, everybody's trying to turn around and look at me this way. Those are all very real. And, you know, we don't have all the answers to those, but that's the hard work that's still before us. We cannot, there, there's a concern to, if you think about it, that this is, that, that is the case, it's all on the back of Hope &amp; Play. And I'm not critiquing the church, but that's a serious thing to think about. I mean, should it be? Does it need to be? Probably, in order to happen, yeah. And knowing that, knowing your eggs are in that basket, then that means that's the kind of work that Lou's talking about. That kind of work has to be done. Yeah, we can't just hope it'll happen, no. And so that's a very serious consideration. So, yeah. Lou?
I want to think, what I was trying to say is that it's going to require, it's going to require a way that we have to work together in ways that we really don't need. We don't have, we don't, we're 20 years. We're happy to deal with people when they come in the door. This changes very much our self-understanding. And as, that's what the path I'm looking for. You know, are we, if we step out in faith, you got to row the boat, too. That's all I'm trying to say. And there's a lot of the story, you know, that I think we have to examine and forthrightly put there so we can understand the way.
We all have to row together.
We, yeah, and so to me, we, we really should ask the questions. Don't leave a meeting today and you didn't ask the question you wanted to ask. Okay? So that you know what you want to do.
And we're not running away from these conversations either.
We should, really.
Just because today is the discussion, none of your leadership is running away from these questions. Because as soon as you hit the parking lot, you'll say, oh, I should have asked that question. So then contact us, and we'll talk about it. Nancy?
Well, one of the things that I, I know we need to be concerned at is, if we look around this room, given a few, there are a few youngsters, but, yeah, no. But you see that this congregation that came here for this meeting are not the school age, they don't have preschoolers. And we need, I don't know how we're, we do, we need to do it, but we have to, and continue to enhance the younger age people to come to this church. Not just the kids that have preschool income, but in the community, how are we going to lower the age of, the average age of this congregation? It's, it's essential. And meet the needs of the people that are here as well.
Right.
We have to do both.
Renee?
I've been thinking about this for a long time, being in leadership in different roles here, and what I'm grappling with is, when I say yes to this building, what am I saying yes to? When I say no to this building, what am I saying no to? Because it's a much, it's not just about a building, it's what we're going to look like as a congregation going forward. What, what responsibilities we'll have, what debt we'll be encumbered by. There's just both sides of it that I keep, I, I can't make a decision yet. I've got to spend a lot of time, even though I've, I've looked at most of this already and I've, I've walked the perimeter of where this will be, there's so many pieces to this. There's what God wants us to do, there's what that requires of us, and so there's, I was trying to look at all those different pieces of what does yes mean and what does no mean.
It, and, and it's, it's definitely something we're asking the entire congregation to be in prayerful discernment about before we get to that vote. That's exactly why we're doing these, this Town Hall. And if we need another conversation before the vote, then so be it, then we'll have another conversation.
I am not a member of Hope. Excuse me. I was a member of Asbury. We all know what happened to Asbury. It grew old. I was a member there for over 20 some years. The same conversation that is going on here went on at Asbury. Think and act young. What do the young people want? What brings them to your church to help contribute in so many ways? To grow your church, not grow the body of the church, but grow the love of Christ in that church. Because that's the only thing that's going to strengthen you and your hope to grow. All the financial aspects of the church. Wonderful. Great. Can we do it? Okay? But the only way you're going to do it is through your faith in Christ.
Amen. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kathy. I am your lay servant. You all lay heavily on my heart and my mind at all times in this church. I'm charged to be your voice and to be your vote. Who we are, coming from the annual conference, we are love and forgiveness. We need to go forward. What forward looks like can be frightening at times, it can be challenging. But I know this congregation and these faces I see here and those out online hearing, we are strong. We made it through 2020, we served so many. But we also need to be cognizant of those that we are no longer serving to. There will be times that we have to cut back and become even more creative, to nurture to them, to gain them back into where we are. We have some that we're losing, some we have lost. We need to gain, we need to recapture them. We need to fill everybody's heart with renewed purpose and with the love of Jesus Christ because that is where our grounding is and our faith. If we are, we keep saying, who are we? Who are we in Hope? And we talk about large mega churches around us, but we are Hope. And we may be smaller in numbers and smaller in building, but we are the largest I have seen out in this community, serving, faithful, dedicated. And sir, from Asbury, please join us. I'm Kathy, welcome. Come, worship with us. Come and serve mission with us, we are here. And let us, if this is the project that we vote to take on, then that's part of who we become. Then let's become that, let's get out into the community, bring them in. And even if we do have to scramble around for seats, I would gladly stand in the back for that purpose. So for all of us, God bless you, continue to be thoughtful and prayerful about this. And I know God will lead each and every one of us when that decision comes. And thank you for all of you that are always serving and serving faithfully. You are a blessing to each and every one.
Thank you, Kathy.
Amy was standing in the back and she immediately went.
Sometimes I have a big mouth, but I'm sitting here staring at the word connect, huge, big word, connect. And so be it if the school brings us in the bucks, so be it. If you can say, you know, I, I want to bring people in and I have a neighbor come to Hope, they want to know what they're going to find when they get here. How do we connect? What do you got going on, Hope Church? And I don't think we have enough going on. I mean, so be it. You need, you want fellowship, you want to connect with our church and each other? You're not going to do it. Sorry, Lord, you're not going to do it by simply praying. You got to move, you got to do things. I don't know what they are, but I sure would like to hear people say, hey, how about, let's try it? It may not work the first time, but try it. Try something. So connecting, we have to do. Bring the bucks in from school. Yay, yay.
I got a question. I might have missed this if you covered it because I was running slides and stuff. Did we discuss like a break even point for like, for the turnout of the preschool?
Sure. So the pro forma, Jackie, I think you ran the numbers at, at 80% and we were still good. And I believe if you look at that pro forma, if you back it down to something in the 40 to 50% range is where the break even would be. Do you remember running that number? You don't? We, we can, we, we have the pro forma, so it just, it just means plugging in a different percentage.
Cool.
When you talk about the numbers, are you talking about the-
When you talk about the numbers, are you talking about the overall budget and so forth?
So maybe I don't understand the question fully.
Are you talking about the, uh, when you say a breakout at eighty percent? Are you talking about overall for the church?
Eighty percent of the school seats filled.
That's eighty percent of the school.
Correct.
What about the eighty percent of the, of the commu-, of the congregation?
So.
What happens with eighty percent of what we had last year compared to what?
So you're talking about church funding?
We're talking about overall. Because part of that five point four is going to be running electric bill, right? And air conditioning? For this along with the, the new building.
Right, so.
We talk about, I look at things as overall. You know, I go to a store and it's five dollars and ninety-two cents. That ain't five dollars and ninety-two cents to me. It's the six dollars and a quarter or whatever it is. And that's what I'm paying for. I ain't worried about that five ninety-two. I'm worried about the overall. Okay, that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at things that could see that could happen also.
Right.
About two air conditioners and so forth.
Right.
Definitely need those, the roof. But I'm also concerned about a little bit when we have to take our budget after we've been here twenty years almost. And we're still working on a budget. Uh, a, 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 a loan. See, that's what I, we should have had that loan paid off by doing certain things.
Right.
That, has it been that we've been borrowing again on, on loans? Is that what's been going on? Why haven't we had that taken care of a long time ago?
So just so we're clear, the numbers that we're talking about, we're not looking at budgeting any of the expenses of this church. So that runs off of a different budget. And one of the line items from Hope and Play is Hope and Play does pay back this church for their space. And without that money, we'd have some financial difficulty and we know that. So if you're talking about just the budget for this church, that is a different conversation to have. Because we're not looking at this church to fund that school. Does that make sense?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I understand exactly what you're saying. But I'm looking at the five point four. I'm not looking at the four point something that you. I'm looking at the five point four.
Did you have, Jim, did you have something to add?
So this, I mean, this is a, you know, this is very, very complicated. But um, we um, do have or did have an emergency fund. Okay, so um, that we had, you know, in case, you know, we had an issue. Okay, and so, oh, you know, the plan was for us to use that money, right? To, to do the air conditioning and the roof and all that. But guess what happened, right? We have a pandemic, you know, we had other things come up, you know, and that money slowly dwindled away. And um, as we, we know, we don't, we don't get enough revenue from our congregation to be able to build that back up. Okay? So that's where we are. That's why we need to add that money into the, into the loan, right? To pay off a loan that we do have still, you know, and also to get the roof and the air conditioning done. So that's, to answer your question, you know, that, the, the point is we, we, we normally do in our budget have an emergency fund. But it, you know, due to recent conditions, it, you know, it, it had to be used. You know, so.
Also, the, also the additional funds that are brought in, the district is asking for our plan for capital improvements of our church, right? So we're going to need to provide that for them as well. We have to show them that we're also going to be putting money in the bank and making plans for the future based on the revenue that is coming from this loan.
I'm trying to look, I'm trying to look at our plan. And our emergency plan. Money already gone. I mean, I can answer it pretty well. I can answer her.
Greg?
Because we just made this pitch to the, to the conference. And his response was, yeah, about ninety percent of churches don't really have an emergency budget. You know, this is pretty normal. Not that it's a good thing, but it's, but it's pretty normal, was, was his, his comment. Um, so he pretty much understood why we were including the roof and the air conditioning. As. Say that again? Oh, sorry, I'm Greg Cornet. I'm sorry? Yeah, I, I'm on the building committee, so it's, uh, so yeah, so when we, when we brought this to him, he was like, yeah, a lot of churches do that when they make a big, you know, ask for a big loan like this, they'll also say, hey, and we also need to do this to our existing building and that's, they kind of expect it. It's, it's not out of the ordinary at all. So, and we're not, um, I, I think there was a question about are we borrowing against the current mortgage? Uh, no, not at all. Uh, we're just rolling the tiny, small amount that's still there into this whole new five point five. Yes, Corle?
Uh, that's being paid off this year.
Yeah. Yeah, our, our current mortgage is on pace to be paid off this year.
Thank you, Corle.
So that's, that's a very, very small drop in the bucket of, of this, you know. If you want to throw a mortgage burn, burning party and then let's go right out and get another one? I'm all for it. That's fantastic. Did I, did I answer that question? Sorry. Okay, sorry.
Hi, my question is, you talk about eighty percent in the pro forma, we can afford it. How long are we going to, how long is it going to take us from when all the approvals, all the loans, we start the construction to when it opens? And how long is it going to take us then to get to the eighty percent?
So the construction is going to take one year. One year. That's great, doesn't it?
Says the planning.
Okay.
The plan is for January twenty-three, is it? What's next year, twenty-two, right? Yeah, January twenty-three, I think it's, it's based on a little bit.
Right.
They tried to get it done sooner, but they said, you know, the, the issue is Pasco County. The issue is, we could get to, we could get it moving quicker. But the, all, all the permitting through Pasco County, we have a civil engineer that works for us. That's his whole job. He just meets and works with Pasco County to try to get um, the permitting done. So now, once the permitting's done, okay? They can then put a shovel in the ground, but they can't do it until the permitting's done. And that usually takes six to nine months. Now, we're, we're into that, we're working on that, okay? So, well, you know, but it's going to take a while before we can put a shovel in the ground. When we first met with the architects, right, when we were first talking about this in twenty-fourteen, that's exactly what they said. If you tell us go right now, you know, tell us to go, I want this, here's everything, I want this building built. They said it would take six to nine months for us to get the permit, permits. So this is not, I mean, this is, it, it takes a long time, right? And we're dealing with, he would not believe how high the toilets got to be, how high the, you know, the countertops got to be, what kind of plumbing, should it be two inches, should it be an inch and a half? I mean, should the drains be in the floor? Should they? You have no idea the details that you have to go through for buildings. I, I thought you just built a building, right? No, yeah, you don't, you don't just build a building. Low voltage stuff, you know, um, where, where is the servers going to be? Where will the, the transponder point's going to be worth that? And it, it, it just goes on and on and on. So, yeah, it'll take, it'll take a while. But they, they said that was not going to stay to do it, have it done. They're going to try to shoot for, um, you know, eight, beginning of school year, next year. Okay, they'll, they'll, they'll make it that. They said for sure it'll get it done by January. That's all the permitting goes, you know, like, if it all goes smoothly. If it doesn't, it may take longer.
I just have a curious question. Doesn't matter here and there, but um, did COVID hinder the, the pledges, uh, the amounts coming in? Did that hinder what people pledged?
The pledges were done. Um, Corle, thank you for providing me the statements. Corle provided for me at the end of May, all of the statements of what was pledged and what has been collected. So the pledges and the contributions, you're talking about what was pledged and then what came in. Correct. Did it slow down? Yes, it did.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I, I don't know that I have the exact number of what we haven't picked up from the pledges exactly. But we can get that number for you. Yeah. There, there are a lot of people out of work and there, you know, so, so that has changed. However, we are seeing now the numbers come back up. We'll get a microphone to you.
Hey, while Kelly is taking the microphone back there, I just wanted to throw you a couple little pieces of information. Just relation, well, building wise, if you don't realize exactly where the building's going, because I know that was a small little drawing. The building's going to go on the basketball court and where the playground is, it, we will have to move the playground. Uh, so it's going to start where the basketball court is and go further back. And then we, and, and again, part of the budget is we're moving the playground, uh, so that we can make room for the, for where the building is going to go. So that's where it goes from the end of the building, from that back preschool door over towards the, the hump is where the, where the leach field is for the, for the septic. So that's where it actually will be. And I also wanted to let you know, we struck gold with our builder. He, he has, not he, they have experience, one, with building schools, two, with building churches, and three, he's a Methodist. And he, and he's actually is this, it's the same builder that built this building, the one we're standing in now. So they have a lot of experience and history, not only with this building, but with the lot as a whole. So we did, we, we found the right builder. No, he goes to First Methodist in Tarpon. Is where he goes. Yeah, we've got another question back there.
Yes, please.
Um, I'm looking at everything that was spoken today. And what I'm already seeing is a sense of a silo effect. Building, school, church, patrons, community members. And I already feel a very, a division already. Maybe because of the presentation, you were very, you know, forward with all your, your, um, how much this is going to make and, and all of that, but I, I, I'm sensing that from membership that we're looking at huge amount of work, budgetary requirements. We want to give. We all want to give to this. But it's not that we want to know what's going to come to us, but how is that going to affect us here? How is that going to affect the church, the community? And I just see unless we pitch this as a joint project, the way I, I think a lot of members are looking at it now has a very, that very real silo effect. That it's two different entities. I want to see us go forward. I don't, it's not that I don't care if the children don't come to our church. I think there's a huge need to bring the word of God to children. If they don't come to our church, they've heard it, let them go and live it out life. So I am all for it, but I think to get the community as a whole, we need not to project it in this way as a silo. And maybe there's truly a real need to connect the two projects.
And, and we agree. And we were also cautioned by district to say that that silo approach is kind of what they do want to see because our church is a church. The preschool is a mission of the church, right? So just like we have all of our other missions, they all work into the body of what the church does, but there are, they are all separate arms. So from a financial standpoint, keeping those pieces of books, yes, you're right. When we, we talked about it today, there was definitely a segregation because the pieces of books are different. You know, so I, I, point well taken. But we also have to be careful because our business is being a church. So this is, this is one, one of our missions that we accomplish.
Susan?
Thank you. I don't have a strong enough voice. So I'm listening to all of this and I'm trying to put together the big picture. So please tell me if this is it. The school is the means to an end. And our destination, where's Lou? Our destination is to grow God's light, His word in this world. And that school gives us a chance to do that.
Correct.
Thank you.
And, and that school helps us raise mature followers of Jesus Christ.
I'll say one more thing. Sorry, I keep piping in. To me, the, yeah, great, the preschool. But to me, the exciting part about the building is the fact that Kelly is going to have a place where he can counsel people. He's going to have a, a private meeting room for the pastor to be able to have counseling space. There will be an office space where they can have staff meetings, where they're not sitting in tiny little chairs. Uh, they are, we're going to have six adult Bible study rooms. When's the last time somebody said, hey, man, we have so much space. We can start up like all sorts of Sunday school classes. We, we've, haven't been able to do that for years. These are the things that I'm looking at. I'm looking at the youth. When the youth want to have an event, they don't have to come in here and spend thirty minutes moving all the chairs out of the way. You know, there will just be a youth space. It will be their youth space that they will, that they will have. Um, that gives us so much growth potential there as well. We, yes, the preschool's great. That's fantastic. And it's great that it's going to fund it for us, but it's the second floor that I'm excited about. That's the part that, that I love about this building is what it's going to do for us, that what we are going to gain as a church.
Speaking of moving chairs. Amy's back there going. So I'm gonna throw it on Amy. It's Amy's fault. No, I'm just kidding. Anything else? Good discussion. Continue to pray. Continue to think about it. We'll have more. We will.
Thank you for all of your comments and input.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Jackie.
How about we close in prayer so we can all have some prayerful discernment and I'll leave that to you.
Oh, you're going to make me do that?
Yeah, I'm going to leave it to you.
I'm off the clock. I'm not even supposed to be here.
Overtime.
Do I have to clock back in and then clock back out for a two-minute prayer? A twenty-minute prayer? Do I hear thirty?
We still take donations. To limit the amounts of this.
Do we need to pass the plate and say the Lord's Prayer and all that stuff? Almighty God, thank you for laughter and for the love that's in this room and in this church. And uh, it truly is our desire to serve you and to serve our community. And so we trust that you will guide us in that. And we also know somewhere deep down inside that regardless of the outcome, we're still the church. As Kathy said before, we are hope. And if that's not uh, in your plans for us, then you will lead us in that too. Uh, we just want to be faithful stewards with what we've been given and the opportunities. And we, we truly want to do uh, the very best that we can to grow your kingdom. Uh, and we just again pray that over time, through discussion and prayer, that we would discern that with clarity as a body. And that regardless, we would move forward together in faith to honor you and. and that regardless, we would move forward together in faith to honor you and to bring others to your son. That's the reason we are. And we give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you all. If you can help with chairs, that's great.